Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk. Please call the rule to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Sorry, I'm here, Mindy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cheney will be absent today. Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Jennings? I show the council member online. We'll wait a moment.
I'm here if you can hear me.
We can now. Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg?
I'm here. Good afternoon, everyone. I see Daniel Bowers, our very fine Sacramento Office of Emergency Management Director. Wonder, Mr. Bowers, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
There he is.
Thank you, Mayor. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much, Mr. Bowers. Thanks for all you do. So, members, let us begin this evening. I think we have a relatively short meeting. We will see. Let's begin with some special presentations. Turn it over to Councilmember Geta, who is the Chair of our Air Quality Management Board, to present a resolution regarding Clean Air Day. Councilmember Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have a resolution on Little Italy first, but glad to go first if we want to go in that order.
I'm just following the, you know, the formalized agenda as it reads in front of me, but I don't care.
Glad to go first here. You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. October 6th coming up here is Clean Air Day, and today we annually do this. This is the fourth anniversary of our efforts to do Clean Air Day. And this year, I think we've got someone. There we go. And I think this year is a very special year, given all of the tremendous efforts that we have undertaken as a city combating the issue of climate change, and most importantly, fighting for clean air. We know that particularly with the wildfires and even just our current health effects that we have from combustion engines, that seniors, people with respiratory illnesses, and also our children who are developing their lungs are greatly affected by poor air quality. Well, October 6th is an education day that we use to encourage everyone to make a little effort. And if you think about just, you know, if you have the ability to avoid using a combustion vehicle just once a week, that week, you can reduce your own personal pollution output by at least almost nearly 20%. But October 6th is a great day for Clean Air Day. And what I'm here to accept the resolution for Clean Air Day is Julia Randolph from the Coalition for Clean Air. This is a statewide effort, but Sacramento is leading the charge. And we've got organizations, not only like the county, the air district, Caltrans, which is involved in our roadway infrastructure, Sac Republic is joining in on this effort, but Julia Randolph here is leading our efforts locally, Coalition for Clean Air and outreach organization in Sacramento. Julia, say welcome and tell us a little bit about Clean Air Day.
Hi, I am Julia Randolph with the Coalition for Clean Air. Thank you, Councilmember Guerra, for giving a great explanation to why Clean Air Day is so important. Believe it or not, the Sacramento-Roseville region has the sixth worst ozone smog-forming pollution in the nation. The damage air pollution is doing to our climate and our public health is the reason why we need to take action on air quality and greenhouse gas emissions now. And, you know, like Councilmember Guerra said, this is an education tool. And, you know, while California Clean Air Day is not any physical state government policy itself, it is behavior change for many people, and this behavior change is meant to affect public policy. So if you or your organization or government entity has not signed on, I encourage you to do so at CleanAirDay.org. But yeah, on behalf of the Coalition for Clean Air, I am happy to accept this resolution.
Well, thank you, Julia. And in the resolution, one of the whereas' recognizes the great work of our permanent climate action lead and a director here, Jennifer Venema. Let's give her a virtual big round of applause because all of the great work, the electrification ordinance, our energy efficiency efforts, and even in our consent item today, the allocation of an air quality monitoring program would not happen without the work of Jennifer Venema, working with all our different partners. I'd also like to recognize that our school districts have gotten into the air quality challenge. And if Tim Shannon from the Twin River School District could jump and join us in here. Councilmember Sean Laloe and I went to go visit a great partner that is working with the city, the California Mobility Center, SMUD, in our school districts. This cycle, Tim Shannon, who is, if you don't mind putting your camera on, Tim, the fleet manager for Twin River School District. Sacramento now has the first and largest school district but a school fleet in the nation. Nowhere in North America are there more electric school buses than here in Sacramento. Both Elk Grove and Twin Rivers are the largest, but Natomas has now joined in on this effort. Natomas Unified, Sac Unified has also got put together some electric school buses. And what's important about the school buses for those of us to remember, because we remember that smell of diesel when they, when we would be in the, in the school bus, but also the communities where the school buses ride. Tim Shannon has converted what used to be detractors of this transformation technology into now creatures of this technology. Tim, would you like to say a couple of words here?
I would, but you guys will have to turn my video on if you want to see me.
Well, we can hear you, Tim. Let's, we'll go.
Okay, well, I will tell you that I really appreciate all the efforts that Mayor Steinberg has done in the city council here in Sacramento. They've been great supporters of us, and we are all about clean air. And I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but we have currently 43 electric school buses in our fleet. We already have another 20 procured, and we have funding lined up thanks to Sacramento AQMD. We will have a fleet of 82, and we're putting in infrastructure to be able to charge those 82 with V2G. But it's, you know, clean air for kids and community. We are the largest electric school bus fleet in North America. And we're leading the charge to help everybody in California to go electric. And I think it's the best thing, you know, clean air for kids and community. What more can you ask?
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate your efforts. And not only that, we're employing people to assemble these school buses. We're making sure that its workforce, communities, you know, who have been left behind, bring them with us as we charge ahead, no pun intended, into the future technology. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go Sacramento. Let's go Clean Air Day.
Good. Thank you, Councilman Geta. That's great. Yes, we're, we're on the cusp here of really doing some great things around climate we must, and the resolution is a great reminder. Thank you so much. Resolution regarding Little Italy, Councilmember Harris. This is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go, go.
Now, first I'd like to say, I sit on the air district with Eric, and this, this electric bus fleet is just, is fantastic. You know, if you think about when the air is cleanest in Sacramento, it's usually on Sunday. Now, why do you suppose that is? It's because people aren't driving and people aren't using their blowers nearly as much in their gas-powered.
Mr. Shurudi?
Yeah, Bill, would you turn off your microphone for a moment?
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
So anyway, that was, that was just my addition. You know, we are making strides, and there's a lot of great players. I agree with you about Jennifer Venema, Councilmember Guerra. Okay.
And I do want to give you credit because the next initiative which you're taking on is electric planes.
That's right. I'm trying to bring electric training aircraft to the Sacramento region and making headway. You know, the next resolution is about recognizing the historic Little Italy district. Now, if you've ever been in East Sacramento and traveled down Folsom Boulevard, you will have noticed an awful lot of Italian businesses and institutions like St. Mary's Church, of course, Cordy Brothers. You remember Espanyo, which is the new Beavis. The Italian heritage has paid, played a big part in the formation of Sacramento since its inception. And there were enclaves where people of Italian descent settled, mostly East Sac, also South Side and Oak Park. But over the years, it's really become the most concentrated enclave in East Sacramento. So Italian runs, Italian roots run deep in the history of the city of Sacramento, right from the Gold Rush days forward. There are many vestiges of this. Again, I mentioned St. Mary's Church. In days past, the mass would be held in Italian in St. Mary's Church because of the concentration of Italian individuals in the area. We've got the East Portal Bocci Club, the Italian Cultural Society, the Italian Catholic Federation, and of course, a plethora of businesses that celebrate Italian heritage. So I'm very pleased to bring this resolution forward just to acknowledge our cultural contribution to the foundation of Sacramento through over 100 years. It's really a pretty neat thing. I'd also like to say, my next door neighbor, Tony Scolora, was one of the great generation. And an incredible person. His parents were Sicilian, his wife's parents were Sicilian, although they were both born in Sacramento. Two of the finest people I've met in this town. And, you know, they really inculcated me into the history of Italian influence in our great city. I just wanted to recognize them. They've both passed along now, but wow, you couldn't ask for better neighbors. Anyway, I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but I would like to say, now therefore, let it be resolved, the city council recognizes the area bounded by 48th and 59th Streets and J Street and Folsom Boulevard as the historic Little Italy district. And I do have a guest here, William Shurudi, who brought this idea to me along with Fabrizio Sasso. And Bill, I'd like you to unmute now, and you've got a couple of minutes to talk about what moved you to come to my office and want to push this resolution.
Go ahead, Bill.
Start my video.
There you are.
Okay. Well, I was born and raised in East Sacramento. I grew up with the Italians, a couple of generations of them. And in recent years, we felt that the district, the Little Italy district, and the achievements of the people that created that thriving neighborhood should be recognized. Growing up in East Sacramento, there were so many Italian families. And there were whole blocks where predominantly all the families were Italian-American. And to this day, there are many Italian families residing in the area. As the Director of the Italian Cultural Society, we have over 400 households in East Sacramento that just receive our newsletter. So there's still a large residential population and longstanding businesses. And I remember them building that thriving Little Italy community and the social institutions that went with it. I remember when they built, actually was alive when they built St. Mary's Church. And it was in a field, and I was born on the last block where the farms were, when East Sacramento was mostly farmland and truck farmers. And I remember they built the church, and it was an Italian national church built by the Italians so that they could pray there when they might not be able to pray in other Catholic churches. And they also built Giovanni Hall, which is the event center for the parish. And that was all done by the Italian community of the time. And today, the Italians still operate a lot of, there are six Italian organizations that still operate in the district with many members. And also, the heart of the district, there's the East Portal Bocci Club or Park. And the East Portal Bocci Club now has 65 league teams that play in that park. So it's with such a longstanding tradition, it seemed like it was time to claim that heritage and recognize it. So that's, that's why I approached Jeff with the idea.
Well, thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. There is a lot of Italian influence, certainly in East Sac, but like I said, also in South Side and Oak Park. I mentioned a couple of names, but just think about it. Tolini, Bertolucci, Nicoletti, Cordy. You know, these businesses have really strengthened the fiber and fabric of East Sacramento. So I'm pleased to bring this resolution. And don't be surprised if you see a couple of signs go up that to mark our historic Little Italy district. Thank you very much to my council colleagues, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. It's great. I see Fabrizio Sasso, the head of the Labor Council, on the call as well. And he was a proud Italian-American. Welcome to you, Fabrizio. Do you want to say anything?
You know, the only thing I want to say is that, one, you know, I want to thank Councilmember Harris for believing in this vision and for his support to honor the contributions of Italian-Americans within our city. His Chief of Staff, David Gonzalez, and City Staff, Leslie Ritchie and Valerie Mamonie-Warder, and all the businesses and residents who we've talked to who've shown support for this project, and you, the city council, for your support. You know, like East Sac, I'm not a, I'm not a native to Sacramento. I'm from Stockton originally, that has a large Italian population. So when I moved here, I was attracted to East Sac not knowing the history. It was just, it just felt comfortable. There was familiarity, and it just felt like Italian neighborhoods. And then, as I learned more, realized that there's, there's a rich history here. And so I'm just really proud that we're doing this. And I remember pitching this idea to Bill about five years ago. Here we are five years later, recognizing this. So thank you again for all of your support.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Fabrizio, and Bill for coming. This is great.
It's really great. It's great to celebrate our diverse culture here in Sacramento. Thank you very much, Jeff, Councilman Harris, for bringing this forward.
My pleasure.
Excellent. All right. Let us now move to the consent calendar. Are there items that any member would like to remove, be heard, voted on separately, discussed separately? Councilmember Vang, you were going to make a comment, I know, on one item, correct?
Yeah, I didn't, I'm not going to pull any items off consent, but just wanted to comment on item 17 and item 25.
Okay, so let me just make a note there.
That being said, Mayor, I'll move consent.
Okay.
Hey, I'll second that, and I had a comment as well.
Comment on which item, Councilman Geta?
Now I lost the number on basically the air quality monitors.
Okay, very good. We'll get to you then. All right, just moved in second. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, I have four members of the public with their hands raised to make comments on the consent calendar.
Go, go.
Thank you. First speaker is Diane McClure.
Hello, thank you. My name is Diane McClure. I'm a registered nurse. I've been a registered nurse for 32 years. I work here in Sacramento, in South Sacramento, and I live in Sacramento. I'm also a member of the California Nurses Association Board of Directors. I am super excited to see that Katie Valenzuela, Valenzuela added this to the agenda as far as AB 1400 and HR 1976. That would be Calcare as well as the National Bill Medicare for All. Would very much like to see this resolution passed. I know that obviously some other major cities, I believe there's, we're up to about 10 in California that have adopted this resolution, including LA, Oakland, and San Francisco. And I do believe that we need to be right up there with them and to really work hard on getting this passed. I've personally worked very hard. As a registered nurse, going through this pandemic, I've seen all the more need for, for people to be able to have Medicare for All. I believe that healthcare is a human right. I personally have seen people lose their jobs and thus lose their insurance. And they, some people just work just for insurance, and it's not right. Healthcare is a human right. People need to have healthcare and not have to worry about trying to scrape just, just to have that healthcare. I personally have seen patients even turned down for surgeries. I work in a surgical area. I've seen them turned down for surgeries even when the doctor has deemed it necessary to have this surgery. And then they have ended up not getting the surgery, and then that just, that just perpetuates not being able to go back to work because they, they can't work until they've healed. So I absolutely urge this city council, please pass this. It's super important, and the nurses will absolutely be behind you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kathleen Williams.
Yeah, my name is Kathleen Williams. I'm also calling in to support the resolution in, for the, for AB 1400 and the national one as well. I note that Calcare has counted 3.2 million Californians without insurance. It is a desperate situation. I just recently had cataract surgery. It was $20,000 and I. But because I'm a member of Medicare, I didn't have to pay, and I think that should be available to everyone. And there's definitely a coverage gap where the very poor may qualify for Medicaid, whereas the middle-income people do not. So I really think, you know, we've spoken of Sacramento leading the charge. I think we should join the other cities in California, including San Francisco, to resolve in favor of this and fight like hell for Calcare. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anna Jenkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Oh, my name is Anna Jenkins. I am also an RN, and I was born and raised in Sacramento. And I work at a hospital in the city that provides care to uninsured Medicare and Medi-Cal patients. I see the negative impacts our broken healthcare system has on my patients, their family, and our community each and every time I work. We have patients that come in emergently who were too scared to seek care before it became urgent because they do not have access to primary care. We have patients that during their emergency health event are more concerned about their bill than they are their recovery. We have patients who cannot be properly and timely discharged to skilled nursing facilities due to the facilities not accepting their form of insurance or lack thereof insurance. We have patients who tell us heartbreaking stories about not being able to pay for their prescriptions or who ration their medications. The stress and anxiety of not having insurance or having inadequate coverage impacts our patients' mental health, which is another very important layer to this problem, as many do not have access to therapeutic social services they need and deserve. As a society and a state, we can fix these problems. We can ensure that all people have access to healthcare by passing and supporting Calcare AB 1400 and HR 1976 and the Medicare for All Act of 2021. I'm here asking the city council to follow other cities across our state and support these very important bills and to support the people of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Robert Copeland.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I belong to Healthcare for All Sacramento Valley Chapter, DSA Sacramento. I concur with what the other speaker said because our healthcare system is broken. Because I've gone to the pharmacy and couldn't pick up medication that the doctor prescribed. We're paying more for healthcare and get less than other nations that have a single payer system like Medicare for All. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Philip Kim.
Hi, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Philip Kim. I'm a community organizer with the California Nurses Association, also a proud Sacramento resident in Southland Park, District 4. First off, thank you to the mayor for writing a letter to Representative Doris Matsui, urging her to co-sponsor the Medicare for All bill. Really appreciate you doing that. And thank you to Councilmember Vang for speaking at our Calcare Car Rally that we had back in April. And finally, I want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for adding the Calcare and Medicare for All City Council Resolution to the agenda, which is the main reason why I'm calling, item 14. Over, over 50 cities across the country have taken a stand for healthcare justice by passing resolutions in support of Medicare for All. And at least 10 cities in California have passed resolutions this year in support of AB 1400, the California Guaranteed Healthcare for All Act, also known as Calcare. AB 1400 at the state level and the Medicare for All bill, HR 1976, on the federal level would create single-payer healthcare systems and guarantee comprehensive, high-quality healthcare for all residents in California and the United States respectively. They would replace the current profit-driven patchwork that is actively harming and bankrupting thousands of sacramentans every year and replace that with a single-payer guaranteed healthcare system focused on patient care, not profit. Unfortunately, because of the greed of the insurance companies, Big Pharma, and corporate hospital chains, too many sacramentans are not able to get the care that they need due to high cost. And now that a majority of insurance companies are no longer waiving the full cost of COVID treatment, it's all the more urgent that we fix our broken healthcare system. So I urge you all to pass the Calcare and Medicare for All resolution. Our city has a really important role to play in getting our legislators on board. These bills are supported by the California Nurses Association, the Sacramento Central Labor Council, the Democratic Party of Sacramento County. Thank you all for your consideration. Have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Jennifer Muir is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Hello, thank you. Thank you so much, councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang, and Mr. Mayor, for supporting our endeavor to get coverage for all sacramentans. My name is Jennifer Muir. I live in central Oak Park. Jay Cheney is my councilmember, and I am asking him to please support AB 1400, Calcare, or, and/or HR 1976, Medicare for All, that would guarantee high-quality, comprehensive healthcare for all Californians, putting an end to the crippling medical debt plaguing our society today. In California, it is mandatory for us all to have medical insurance. However, it is not mandatory for insurance companies to cover all of our bills. And we are increasingly seeing more and more insurance companies get around coverage for Californians. Personally, I was dropped from Covered California when my income dropped below the minimum level needed for subsidized insurance through Covered California. And I can't afford the $1,000 a month it would take for a private insurance for myself right now. So I'm on Medi-Cal. And because of my age, Medi-Cal is telling me, I'm turning 55, that they will tax my estate when I die for what I use under Medi-Cal. This is outrageous. It really does infuriate me. I would like to get out of this medical quagmire and have my medical insurance covered. Let's get subsidy, let's get Calcare and Medi-Cal for All passed so Californians don't have to live with this horrible idea of debt over their heads all the time. Medical debt is the number one reason we become bankrupt here in California and in Sacramento. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. So this is on the log, so to speak, and whether the will of the council is to move back full vote. I'm good with that. Let's do it. Let's get on record. I've supported single payer all my career because I believe that the current system does not adequately cover people, especially for preventative care, especially in the mental health area, especially in areas where the need is so great. And so I'm fine with it. I'm not quite sure now exactly what the procedure is, Madam Clerk. We don't need a vote, do we, on this? It's just whether members want to comment?
I, I thought we would bring it back as a resolution for a vote, right? That's a request because it's on a pending log. Is that correct?
It's on the pending log, but you've got to go from the pending log.
So we have to approve it, and then a resolution will come to council for a vote.
Okay, so that, that's the way that'll work. Okay, thank you.
Correct. The agenda item today is just moving it from the City Kirk's log of requests to the follow-up log for staff. requests to the follow-up log for staff to work on.
That's right. Okay. I do want to talk about another item on the log about the respite centers to clarify that as well, but I'll wait till the end on that one. Okay, so let's let's go. Councilmember Vang had comments on item 17 and items 25. Go ahead.
Thanks. I will try to keep my comments short. I just wanted to just say I'm really excited about this agreement. You know, RIT is such an important program to ensure access for our young people throughout the city and lessen our environmental impact, as we also are recognizing California Clean Air Day today. And I'm just really glad to see that the city will continue to support and invest in this really important program. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Vice Mayor Shenier, who's not here today, for really just championing this program in our city before our new council arrived. And want to take this moment also just to thank my colleagues who actually serve on the RT board for everything that they are doing to make sure that the city of Sacramento is front and center. And then for item 25, this is an approval for regulatory agreement for Sacramento Manor. I just wanted to say, you know, SAC Manor is an existing market rate housing for our seniors, and it was currently built as an existing marking rate housing for seniors in 1961. And what this regulatory agreement will do with SHRA is really to ensure that these apartments continue to be affordable for our elders in the Sacramento Manor community. It's going to involve improvements to existing buildings and really making sure that we have options for our extremely low income households. I just want to take this opportunity to thank LaShaw and Christine for working with Ms. Danny Bennett to make sure that this actually happens for our South Sacramento community. And so just wanted to say that. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Geta, did you have a comment on that item?
Yes, item number three. I just wanted to thank both the Fert Ridge and Franklin community and also the North Gate and Gardenland community. Out of a meeting with both the United Latinos and then separately with the Gardenland Neighborhood Association came this idea for item number three, which this council, thank you to this council for voting in the mid-year budget to place air quality, air monitoring, and also funding for these organizations to work with the community to address better air quality. So a great effort, and wanted to thank all of the community members who participated in that. Also want to thank my colleagues, Sean Laloe, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Vang on the air district. The four of us that are on the air district have been pushing aggressively on on doing more than just managing the air as from our federal air quality standards, but thinking proactively on how we engage our community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm glad to second this motion.
Very good. Thank you. Let me just go back to the log here, so to speak, because my request is that the council get re-engaged in the discussion regarding our respite centers. I want to maybe clarify before we vote on the on the item. Last week, I was I thought that it is better to raise this discussion about respite centers, especially with winter coming in September rather than December or January. And what I believe, and the reason why I raised this, I believe that we must find a way to open multiple respite centers, nighttime for sure, and I hope we can include daytime respite as well in as many places in city as we can, while we are implementing the comprehensive siding plan. It's not one or the other. And that we engage with our county partners, as we are not only on partnering with us on the comprehensive siding plan, but also on the respite question. I don't yet know, and I think that's why I wanted to raise this early. I had a meeting today with some leaders in the private sector. I want to continue raising this before the city council. Want to continue engage you as my colleagues on the city council. I would hope that Bridget Dean, our director of the Department of Community Response, would come forward with her recommendations for for sites that maybe we thought of or maybe we haven't thought of. And that we make some decisions between the private sector, the city manager's office to Bridget Dean, and you as my colleagues on on actually opening up some respite before the winter comes and before the conditions get too harsh. I do know that we passed a resolution last January, last February, saying we were no longer going to abide by the weather criteria, and that is the policy. And the goal is year round year round respite. But we've got to get started, and we ought to get started with winter coming. And so I just wanted to, I guess, say that I'm not counting on just the members of the city council to come forward with sites. That's obviously good and great. But I would hope that the city manager's side and Bridget Dean would come forward as well. And that I've asked the private sector to come forward with their privately owned vacant sites that we could use to bring people in before the weather gets too cold as a compliment to our comprehensive siding plan, not as a substitute. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
Mayor, can I make one comment? This is purely technical. Madam Clerk, are you there?
Yes, I am.
I'd like to just make a request that for two things with since this is a news and this is going to be a standing item, can you please place it either at the top or the bottom of each consent calendar so that it's easier to find and consistently in the same place? And secondly, I see on today's agenda, you've added the two new requests from Councilmember Valenzuela and Steinberg. Could you also continue to give us the full list in this report also so that we have both the running list and the new requests?
Yes, your request is noted. Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. Yeah, this is a new process, and it's, you know, intended to help the staff and the management, frankly, better gauge what among many priorities or higher priorities. And this allows us, you know, to to say through a consent item, we're going forward with these with these items. You know, it's a little little work in progress, but we'll use it as a good tool here. All right, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer is absent. Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, very good. That is the consent calendar. We do have several public hearings. And why don't we begin with item 26, please?
Mayor, I think I can make quick work of this one if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
I believe I'm on the this is the Natomas item, correct?
Yes.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, waive staff's presentation, if that's okay with Ms. Higginny, and close the public hearing if there are no commenters and move the item.
We're okay with waiving the presentation.
Thank you, Teresa. Thanks for all your hard work, all the time. Appreciate you and your team.
Jennings will second that.
All right. Do we have testimony, any public testimony?
I have no public testimony on this item.
Let's please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer is absent. Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, thank you. We moved to item 27. I know this is Councilmember Vang's district. I think we'll have a presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I like to open the public hearing, have SHR present, and then we can go into public comments before I make my statements.
Okay, very good. Director Dozier, welcome.
Ann Nichols, she's going to do the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Ann Nichols, management analyst. Staff is requesting approval of the final loan and bond documents. The Villa Hardin and Coral Gables project site is located in the Meadowview area. This project is a permanent supportive housing and workforce housing development. In August 2020, the city council and Housing Authority Board approved tax exempt bonds, predevelopment loan, loan commitments, and disposition and development agreements to assist the developer with acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the 82 unit project. The affordability levels are 25%, 30%, and 50% of area median income. The developer and property management agent will be the John Stewart Company. Life steps will provide onsite case management supportive services plus 15 hours of resident services per week. That will include a service coordinator, after school, workforce development, and enrichment programs. County Behavioral Health Services will provide case management and supportive services to households in 15 units assisted with Mental Health Services Act's program funds. The MHSA program funds are administered in partnership with the County Behavioral Health, who has provided funding for this project, pardon, approved funding for this project. The financing structure of the project includes SHRA and Housing Authority Home, Housing Trust Fund, MHSA, and seller carryback loans, HCD multifamily housing program loan, 4% tax credits, tax exempt mortgage revenue funds, conventional loan, deferred developer fee, general partnership capital contribution, and fee waivers. Also, there are 43 project based vouchers to the project from SHRA for homeless families. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the loan documents for the Villa Hardin and Coral Gables development. Staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Councilmember Vang, I'm going to let you take it from here.
Yeah, do we have any public comments on here? Do I my statement first or after I make my comments?
Do we have? Yeah, thank you. Do we have public testimony?
I have one hand raised to make public comment. Jesse Ryan.
Is that is that Jesse Ryan or Jesse Reese?
Jesse Reese. Pardon me.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Jesse Reese, President of the Meadowview Neighborhood Association. I am here to speak briefly on item 27 on your agenda. I am in support of this item on your agenda for the possibilities of rehab and the complex at Coral Gables and also the additional units of affordable houses to be built and to be upgraded with a playground, adequate security, open space, open space, and also laundry facilities. We all talk about our carbon footprint. Maybe in some small way, a large facility will cut down on individuals having to travel back and forth just to do something as simple as laundry. Councilmember Vang has worked hard with SHRA and the city staff to get more quality and affordable housing in District Eight. We hope that all the council member vote in support of this project. Also, as a resident of Meadowview, I feel like Meadowview has been left behind. I look forward to work with Councilmember Vang and SHRA in the next coming weeks to break ground and ensure that we have more affordable options in our district. As I stated earlier, I am hopes that the council vote to go forward with this project. And again, thanks you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Very good. All right, Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this moment to thank LaShaw, Christine, and everyone who's worked really hard on this project. I know how vital this project is to the resident of Coral Gables and really to our greater Meadowview neighborhoods. We have many families onsite there now that need the resources and wraparound services. And actually, Coral Gables, Mayor, you were there. They held their first national night out event this year, and it was organized by community residents, leaders, and less child association. As you all know, South SAC and Meadowview is really in dire need. I think all of Sacramento is in need of affordable and quality housing, especially with wraparound services. And this project would really build a new community building, have security system, playgrounds for our young kids, laundry facilities, right? Most of the time, our families have to ride RT, which is great, but or drive to get to a laundromat. And I think this is going to be really beneficial for Meadowview. Just want to also thank our president from the Meadowview Neighborhood Association, Jesse Reese, for calling in today. And thank you for your steadfast advocacy on behalf of so many families in Meadowview. And with that, Mayor, I like to close the public hearing and move to adopt a city resolution to support development.
Good. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I had to say Pro Tem Ashby seconded that. Rick Jennings thirded it. I just really congratulations to you, Councilmember Vang, and to SHRA. This is really good and important project. And for all the reasons you stated, I just I just got to add a little thing because it just makes me so happy. What I see SHR, when I see the Mental Health Services Act, No Place Like Home initiative that had a little to do with being used to fund a third of the project, it's just like, wow, sometimes that state stuff actually does translate into into a real impact at the local level. So that just tickles me. And thank you. Good. Any, should we call the roll? Let's call the roll.
Thank you. First, Mr. Reese, I'd like to apologize for my masked fogged glasses. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Congratulations, Councilmember Vang. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe?
Congratulations. Great job, Councilmember. Strong yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer is absent. Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
With strong support to my fellow council members. To the east, absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, excellent. That's unanimous. Congratulations. Wonderful. And now the next project, File Number 28, is also a District Eight project. So you want to open the public hearing again?
Yes, Mayor. Again, I like to open the public public hearing, have SHR present again, and then we can go into public comments before I make my statements.
Oh, no.
Ann is going to do the next presentation.
Evening, Ann Nichols, management analyst. In September 2020, the Housing Authority of the city of Sacramento was a recipient of a state Home Key Funding Award in partnership with Mercy Housing California, the developer for the La Mancha project located in South Sacramento near Highway 99 and Mack Road. In December 2020, the developer successfully acquired the former motel and has completed approximately 90% of the conversion from 124 motel rooms to 100 permanent supportive housing units with kitchenettes. And 24 ground floor units were converted into approximately 5,000 square feet of lobby, reception, management offices, meeting rooms, and common area restrooms. All units are restricted to homeless households earning at or below 30% of area median income. And residents have project based vouchers. The developer provides management and resident services. County Behavioral Health Services and Hope Cooperative provide case management and supportive services to the residents. In April 2021, HCD sent previous Home Key awardees an invitation to apply for HCD's set aside of funds to support existing Home Key projects. The developer of La Mancha requested SHRA to apply to HCD for $1.75 million for the purpose of making additional improvements to the project, which includes installation of solar powered carports to reduce operating costs, a new front vehicle gate that secures the property, converting all door locks from the previous hotel card entry systems to traditional residential locks, additional recreation area, and an expanded community room with a covered entry. These items were not included in the original scope due to the limited resources and time constraints to meet the ambitious Home Key program scheduled in 2020. In closing, staff is requesting approval to apply to HCD for $1.75 million and if successfully awarded, enter into funding agreements with HCD and the developer for the project. Staff is available to address any questions you may have.
Right. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Again, very important project. Councilmember Vang?
I think we'll go to public comments and then my statement, yeah.
How many do we have?
I have one speaker on the sideline. Bill Knowlton?
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Bill Knowlton, and I am the executive director of the Mack Road Partnership. We strongly support the efforts to rehabilitate the Mercy Housing project on La Mancha Way. The permanent supportive housing services provided by Mercy Housing and SHRA are an asset to the community we both serve. And I have been in contact with them from the very beginning of this project and throughout their entire time on the Mack Road corridor. Our desire is for them to be a part of our community for many years to come and to continue supporting our business corridor and the people who call Mack Road home. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speakers.
Councilmember Vang, I know I had a quick comment. I can go after you, of course. I just want you I just want you to make sure you've got the first and last word. Go ahead.
I can go last, Mayor. Why don't we take comments from council first?
Council, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to my, my, this is a great rehab of a great project. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge your predecessor, Larry Carr, who accepted the La Mancha project with open arms. It really has proved to be, you know, one element of our toolkit, you know, to deal with low-income housing, to deal with people.
I was like, because this is cute. And when we go out on a date, I could still wear this.
Sharice, you might wanna mute.
Sharice?
Well, it's kinda hard to top that. I'm just saying that thank you, Sharice, for a window into your, into your life. You know, this is a great project, and I just wanted to just give a brief acknowledgement to Larry because he was a champion of it, and I'm definitely in favor of this one. It's, it's a great project, and I really hope we get the HCD fund.
So this is fundamentally a Home Key project, is that correct? And, and tonight's resolution is to seek authorization for additional funding, which is totally appropriate and great. The only editorial comment I wanna make, this is so good. This is so good, and motel conversions have to be a key part of our comprehensive strategy, that I wanna make sure that as SHRA and as our Danielle Foster and that our city management and our teams look at that hundred million dollars that we have laid out, right? As part of our comprehensive planning plan, forty-one of it from ARP. No guarantees, of course, but that you consider motel conversions, including what it's going to take to operate them and service them, to be a key priority, and to be aggressive when it comes to the next round of Home Key funds. Three point five billion dollars, and that we will find a way, you know, with the city and the county and the way we're trying to pool and partner a lot of money. This stuff is a priority because it is, it, it is the best we have that combines getting people off the streets quickly and permanent, and permanent supportive housing. And so we gotta manage costs and all that, but I'm just saying, this is a funding priority on that hundred million dollar side, as far as I'm concerned. And we have in the comprehensive plan multiple, you know, multiple sites here. So, and this shows what this is. I mean, look at what you're doing here. It's needed, it's quality, it's gonna have all the services built into it. We need to do this five times over, please. Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I too also wanna give a shout out to my former councilmember and my high school teacher, Mr. Larry Carr, who championed this before I came into council. I had the opportunity to visit La Mancha site with my staff, and just really wanna thank LaShaw, Christine again, and Mercy Housing, just all the staff there for the great work that they're doing onsite. The rooms are quality when I went there, and I'm just so happy that we have, you know, permanent housing for our unhoused neighbors. As you heard from Mr. Nolton, Bill Nolton, from the Macro P bid, who's been a partner in this project as well, that permanent supportive housing services on La Mancha provided by Mercy and SHRA is really an important asset to our community and especially to our unhoused neighbors. I know Mercy is doing an incredible job on the site, but I wanna make sure as the current councilmember now that we have the resources we need to be successful. And if awarded, this grant will enhance a property and really maintain a strong sense of community. When I was there, there was no community center there for our unhoused neighbors to actually do programming, and that's really sad, right? While we have great primitive services, there is actually no community space there, and this is what, if awarded, this grant will do. And so again, just really wanna thank LaShaw for her, her amazing leadership and her staff, keeping my fingers crossed that we get this. And again, Mayor, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing and move to adopt a city resolution to move forward with the funding application.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. Thank you very much. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Great job again, Councilmember Vang, and also shout out to Councilmember Carr. Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Missionaries absent. Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. That's terrific. Congratulations. Again, we moved to the last item tonight, which is File item twenty-nine. Who's, who's presenting on this? Ms. Banks Robinson?
Yes, thank you. The government code requires that changes to executive salaries be brought forward on a discussion item, so this is just seeking your approval to increase the city auditor's pay as outlined in the report.
I'm happy to waive the remainder of any presentation and move the item.
I second that.
Good. Is, is there any public testimony?
I have no hands raised on this item.
Then let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Missionaries absent. Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that passes, and that completes our formal agenda tonight. Are there, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
I do have hands raised for public testimony on the agenda. The first is from Robert Copeland.
Please.
Mr. Copeland.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I belong to the Sacramento Town and Community and Sacramento has an organizing committee. I'd like to hear more about the House America that Mayor Steinberg supports through the HUD program from the federal government. Plus, at the end of this month, there's gonna be mass evictions going on because of COVID, because the eviction moratorium's gonna end. And I hear entities all around the country are very slow getting the money out to the towns that actually need help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Randy Hicks.
Thank you. And this kinda like goes on a song where I, I live on Diamond Avenue, and there's some construction projects that are happening here. I mentioned this to Sean Wielo, and he's a councilmember out here. And the big issue out here is that they are, they're constructing out here, and they're tearing everything down, but they're leaving it all out in the streets. And what they're doing is, and then when it takes for a long time for them to come and pile things up and then move the stuff. So we, so what they basically are doing is the other project that's going in is they're trying to build a public gas station. We're all for new and affordable housing, but we don't think it should be built on sites that used to be fueling stations, and the traffic's gonna be a mess. So I would like to vote for an environmental study and a traffic study done out here on Mary'sville Boulevard and on Arcade Boulevard. That's where about three of the projects are going, and one's going down the street on Diamond Avenue. Right now, it's an empty lot. The homeless are camping there. They, they put stuff in there, and then they clean it all out again, and then they just dump it on the street again. So we get quite a mess out here, out on De Pas, out on De Paso Heights. So anything that the city council can tell them, take a look at this, we were talking, Sean, about this, we appreciate it. If they're gonna make a project, make it accessible, but also make sure they clean up their mess.
Thank you for your comments. And the last speaker is a phone number, last four digits, four, three, six, six. So phone caller, last four digits, four, three, six, six.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I'm on the road, but I'm, I'm happy to see Mayor Steinberg is back there. I wish his, his health, a healthy recovery, cuz he's very popular in De Paso Heights. I did wanna say, and this is for Mr. City Councilman Laloe, and really all of the city council, and the mayor, and even the city manager and some of his staff. Last week, we released our, our pumpkin swirl cheesecakes, and they went viral. And so we released chocolate swirl, and they went viral. So we have everything in place now, Mr. Laloe and the city council, to do a lot of commerce, hiring people going into October, November, and December. Some very talented people graduate from Grant High School, and I know some of them. So this time of year, I don't know anyone that doesn't recognize it's pumpkin season. And, and I also wanted to make sure the mayor and anyone else listening to know that we were notified that our DGS certification was just renewed. And for those of you who don't know what that's about, you have to meet a serious criteria, including the IRS requirements. So we're not gonna be denied now. All of the paperwork is in order. Manufacturer's ready. I look forward to your call, Mr. Laloe. You have a wonderful staff. And congratulations to my Vang on that project over there. That's a wonderful project, and I wish you well with that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let us hear from the city council members, council ideas and questions, and I'm gonna answer Mr. Copeland's question as part of my comments here. Who, who wants to go first? Who do we have up here? I got, see, Councilmember Harris? I've got Councilmember Getta.
Okay, Mayor, I'll go first. I'll just.
Go ahead.
Today, there was an event at Trinity Cathedral to honor Randy Peregari. A couple of us were able to attend. The mayor was there, I was there. You know, Randy Peregari made an indelible mark on Sacramento. He brought, he brought the culinary arts to, you know, a level that is never attained before in Sacramento. He inspired a multitude of chefs. He is directly responsible for numerous of our eateries here in town. He actually made Sacramento a cool place. He helped change the trajectory from being an agricultural town to a more lively and vibrant city. He was a very distinct player in Sacramento history. It was a beautiful event, extremely well-attended. You know, the words that were spoken, the music that was played were absolutely fabulous, and a very fitting tribute to a major Sacramento. And I just wanted to thank everybody involved and say that, you know, we appreciated everything that Randy Peregari brought to our fine city.
Amen. It's a beautiful service today. Thank you. Councilman Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've got two items. One is with regarding a regional effort to support our Afghan refugees that are coming here. I have, we know, I wanna recognize both our school board member Paula Vieskas for the work that she's been doing in the east end of my council district and the ordinary arcade area on this effort, and also councilmember Stephanie Nguyen from Elk Grove. And there's a, we've, I wanna request that the city manager work with our partners in a resolution welcoming and creating a positive welcoming environment for Afghan refugees and the people of Afghanistan. You know, we've, Sacramento is a huge network. I just toured one of the, the, the community centers that are supporting all these efforts, the Low Family Community Center, and they're opening up their open house next Wednesday. But this is an effort, I think, for all of us to unite as a community. So I'd like to ask the city manager to work with our regional partners on the, this resolution to welcome our refugees that are selected for this area. The second, Mr. Mayor, is a direction to the city manager as well. As part of our last direction during our workforce conversation, the city, the county, and the redevelopment agency are having ongoing conversations about a strategy to best maximize all of the different workforce dollars that are coming in. I'd like to direct the city manager and the Economic Development Department, and thank you, Melissa Anguiano, because you've been an integral part of all this, to include the development of a comprehensive regional childcare strategy as part of that workforce development strategy that's happening between our three agencies and our, particularly our JPA. Over the pandemic, we have lost one hundred and fifty-six childcare centers. That's twelve percent of our region, over two hundred seventy-two childcare home providers that closed down. That's forty-one percent of original supply. And we know that our, our residents go to different parts of the county, our different members of the county come into the city, and as we're encouraging people to come back and to work into the central city, they need childcare, and if we want them to participate in these workforce programs, we need to have that together. So I'd like us to, you know, Mr. City Manager, if we can make sure that that is a principal, principal priority in the city's conversation with the county and with the the redevelopment, employment and trade training agency about developing the comprehensive regional approach to childcare. Mr. City Managers, that, was that clear enough?
Yes, that was. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Getta. I see Councilmember Jennings and Pro Tem Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just, I just wanna applaud you and acknowledge you for your outstanding work in making sure that Hamilton came and stayed in Sacramento, and that fifty-nine thousand people will enjoy seeing that incredible musical and play. So I just wanna acknowledge you. I can't say enough about what you did to make that happen. And in my opinion, as much as I know you are a star, and you should be performing in the play, they should have a role for you there. So good job. I just wanna acknowledge you in front of your peers, just to let you know how much we appreciate the hard work you put in to making that happen, without going into all the detail, but good job. And then in District Seven, we have an event that's happening this Friday, the twenty-fourth, at Goshabin Park. It's called Family and Friends Together Again. And we did that last month with a lot of success. We made sure that we had all the PPP information out there so that people could be safe, and if they didn't bring a mask, we had a mask, we had sanitizer. We had everything necessary in order to keep people safe, and also, you know, distance is wise. But we have the food trucks that are coming from five to eight. We have Jose Hernandez and the Mo Better Jazz Band that's going to play from five-thirty until you tell them to stop. And then for the families who wanna stay and make it a late night, we have a movie night called Incredibles Two. And that's all going to happen, food, jazz, as well as movies, all on the twenty-fourth, Friday the twenty-fourth, at Goshabin Park, right here in Sacramento. We also will be making an announcement next week about another event that's going to be happening at Valley High Park in Valley High. We're gonna make an announcement about that, where we're going to have free food for the first five hundred people who show up, as well as some other things like movie night and music as well. So I'll make that announcement next week when we get all the details together. But things are happening in District Seven, and everybody is invited to come join us as we dance the night away.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. That sounds fun. Councilmember Jennings might even come out there to that. Sounds like a good time. Also, I'm glad you thought to thank the mayor, because I didn't think of that. But people should know, you know, he actually said to me in the last few weeks that this was maybe one of the hardest things that he's had to do in his time. He pushed so hard to get that theater open in time that people in Sacramento wouldn't miss out on Hamilton. And he didn't say anything publicly, and he didn't take any public credit, but people in Sacramento should know he's been fighting that battle for over a month to make sure those doors opened on time. Even with COVID, he still was making those calls to make sure. So Mayor, I know that's one you did quietly in the background, but you do deserve all the credit in the world for that opening on time. And then I have two items. One, I wanna congratulate Kathy and the Hispanic Chamber. They had an amazing event today. Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Guerra and I were all there. It was the State of the Hispanics presentation. They had amazing data done by SAC State. They put together a beautiful presentation, brought it to the Golden One Center, and we were there just to support them, the three of us, and many other folks who are really interested in the data. Councilmember Harris, you'll be happy to know Northgate was front and center, got lots of love and attention from the chamber. And I just wanted to also congratulate Karina and thank her for her work. She was on the stakeholders' focus group that brought forward that data and portions of the presentation today. But I was really honored to be there and, and hear the information. Encourage all of you to take a look at their really good report. It's actually fascinating. It's actually fascinating and something we could build from. And I would ask our Office of Inclusion to take a look at that report. So city manager, maybe you could pass that along. I'm happy to get it to you. I'll have Karina send it over, make sure everybody on your team gets it. But it talks a lot about the need to level the playing field for education and opportunities in the C-suite for Hispanics in our region. I want to make sure we're building off of that data. And then secondly, I want to back up Councilmember Gera here on his ask around childcare. I want to start by thanking Samantha Corbin, Tamika Lacluce, Jessica Pearson, Anna Molander, and Mo Kashmiri, who have been working with SEIU 1021, First Five, and Child Action. They sent us all a comprehensive letter last month with the data that Councilmember Gera just shared around child cares in our region. They also included in that letter to us a list of comprehensive recommendations for how we could proceed. I would like to encourage my colleagues to take a look at that letter. I know stuff gets buried easy, so maybe Samantha, if you're listening, maybe you could resend that to all of us so it's at the top of the stack. And I'll make the commitment, city manager, to get that letter over to you so that you can take a look at those recommendations they've made. And as we have a broader conversation around childcare, which the mayor has done a great job of placing additional funding for us to work with, that we take a look at what that community is suggesting. And this builds off of the great work from, as you know, Mayor Wendy Hoyt and Rosanna Herbert and the work that they have been doing for many years. So happy to help usher that along and, and support others on the council who I know are very interested in the topic as well. That's it for me. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Protem. Very compelling subject. We're going to, people go back to work. Childcare is an essential piece. And thank you to both of you for, for leading here. Hey, thank you for the shout out and the thanks on the theater. You know, it was a real team effort here. And I, I know I won't thank everybody, but just, you know, city manager Howard Chan had put his heart into this and did everything to both protect the public safety and be flexible to make sure we got it done. And Ophelia Avalos really led beautifully on this, and Winford DeLeon and Jason Lee and so many other people. Really, you have no idea just the extra untold numbers of hours to make sure that we didn't disappoint the people. And that's all it was about. Sacramento deserves this, and they deserve Hamilton. And yeah, there were, you know, some, some issues in terms of the timing, but the contractor Kitchell and the subs, everyone in the end stepped up. And, and so we delivered for the people. And by the way, it is a beautiful iconic theater. Love the Mondavi Center, love it. I think it's wonderful, but I'm telling you, we more than rival that Mondavi Center. And it's, it's just a treasure for the city. And I'm really, really happy about that. So thank you to everyone who helped make that happen. And then finally, Mr. Copeland asked about my participation yesterday with mayors throughout the country with Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Fudge, Marshall Fudge, to talk about the House America program that is being led and sponsored by HUD. Bottom line is this, there is $200 billion in the proposed reconciliation bill. You know, the $3.5 trillion proposal that is now being debated in Congress. And we all know the sort of national story that there are some in the US Senate on the Democratic side who's saying that price tag is too large. I think it might be too small, given all the needs we have in our country. But I'm not a US senator. If the, if the number has to come down, if it has to come down, my message to the nation's mayors, consistent with everyone else's message, is don't cut housing. Housing is infrastructure. Housing is infrastructure. It's every bit as important as transportation, and it's key to our climate imperative as well, especially to build infill and density, which is what we're doing a lot of in this city. And so, Mr. Copeland, we were fighting and are fighting to make sure that that $200 billion stays in the, in the reconciliation bill as they make those inevitable, difficult choices that they have to make. So that was it. That's my report. And if there's nothing else to come before the city council tonight, thank you all. Thanks to the public, thanks to the staff. We are adjourned.